I'm going to call the order of the regular Board of Education meeting on March, May 13, 2020, 7:00 PM. It's a virtual board meeting via Zoom. I will call the role, Mrs. Crabtree.
Here.
Mrs. Booton?
Here.
Mrs. Erickson?
Here.
Mr. Handlin?
Here.
Mr. Matheson?
Here.
Mr. Long?
Here.
And I am here. That will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag.
States of America.
To the Republic.
Which stands.
Okay. Little statement to start the meeting off here. Due to current social distancing guidelines and the stay-at-home order, this Board of Education meeting is being conducted via Zoom. The community can view and listen to the meeting via the link that was provided to the public on the CUSD 200 website. It should be noted to the members of the audience, there is no opportunity for live comment or interactions with the Board. Thank you for the pub-- thank you to the public for their understanding of this need for this meeting to be conducted in this format. Does anyone have any modifications to the agenda that they would like to request?
No.
Okay, hearing none. First, we have public comment for both agenda and non-agenda items during the virtual board meeting. Due to the current social distancing guidelines and the stay-at-home order, the Board of Education has temporarily modified public comment procedures for board meetings. There will now be one opportunity for public comment on both agenda and non-agenda items at the beginning of the meeting. Community members who wish to provide public comment were asked to send an email to the Board of Education at board@cusd200.org between the time the board packet was released and 6:58 PM tonight, Wednesday, May 13, 2020. The public comment emails will be read during the public comment portion of the agenda in the order in which they were received. A copy of the email will also be sent to each member of the Board of Education. Public comments are valuable and important to the Board of Education. We welcome the opportunity to listen to the concerns and issues that are important to our community. Thank you for your understanding of the need for this temporary procedure and for your interest in providing feedback to the Board of Education. I believe we received three emails before 6:58, so I'm going to ask Dr. Schuler to read any of the public comments that were received from the public.
Thank you, Mr. Paulson. So, public comment number one says, Dear School Board, thank you for your time. My name is Paul Lindner. My daughter Lena is a seventh grade student at Monroe Middle School. I have public comments on two items. Number one, the decision to end remote learning on May 29th for the 1920 school year. District 200 is designated June 1st through 3rd as remote learning planning days for staff with non-attendance for students. When the remote learning was first announced March 16th, became an institute day for teachers with no instruction for students. This results in three and a half fewer instructional days than the original calendar. E-learning has already reduced the time my daughter spends on all schoolwork with less than three hours per weekday. I'm disappointed in the amount of actual instruction provided during this e-learning period. The school calendar allowed for school to extend to June 10th, 2020 to cover emergency days. Why weren't these days used to make up for the three and a half missed instructional days? And number two, meeting action item approval to purchase smart boards and mounts for Jefferson Early Childhood. Underfunding the action item says the total cost of $49,102 is allocated in the Jefferson Early Childhood Center post-construction costs for technology. Does this mean that the 49K for these smart boards was included in the capital amount approved by the school district public referendum? Or is the spending in addition to the referendum capital approved? If it is in addition to the capital approved in the public referendum, how is this cost justified? Sincerely, Paul Lindner. Public comment two says, Dear School, dear Board members and Dr. Schuler, for the record, I'm Jim Broman and I'm a resident of District 200. Tonight, I'm speaking as a board member of the Student Excellence Foundation. Last September, Jennifer Merk, the president of the Foundation's Board of Directors, asked the members of the Foundation's Board to attend one of the district's monthly meetings as a representative of the Foundation. I volunteered to attend this meeting of the Board and speak on behalf of the Foundation during public comment. Who could have foreseen in September this pandemic and the challenges we now face? As current events and circumstances would have it, I'm now attending this meeting virtually and presenting my public comments to you via email. I'll keep my comments brief. First, I want to express my deep and sincere gratitude for the remarkable and wonderful work this Board, Dr. Schuler, and the entire administrative team have performed over the last two months. We in the community have all witnessed the outstanding dedication and commitment to serve the students or parents and the residents of the district. In performing your service to the District 200 community during the shutdown, you've continually demonstrated your ability to implement and promote programs and policies that not only continue the education of our children, but also provide for their social and emotional well-being. What you've accomplished over the last two months has been simply extraordinary. Second, I cannot say enough to honor and thank the teachers and educators of the district for the way we've performed over the last two months. All I can say is they're exceptional and we're blessed to have such committed, talented, and caring educators to teach council and serve our children and parents. The District 200 community is so grateful for their dedication to the education and well-being of the children of the district. They are heroes. Finally, I have had an opportunity over the last year to observe and experience the wonderful working relationship between the district and Foundation. We have a common mission of providing our students with the educational experiences to empower them to reach their greatest potential. I've seen this relationship support programs and events that provide our students with these experiences through such events as the STEM Expo and in such programs as the Business Incubator at our high school. These without question are wonderful programs, but when our schools closed in March as a result of the shutdown, the biggest challenge that many of our students and their families faced was not the loss of educational experiences, but the loss of income to buy food. This district and Foundation immediately recognized that many of our families now face this challenge and created a program to meet this need, the Food Insecurity Crisis Fund, through the hard work and leadership of the Foundation's Executive Director, Vicky Sabella, and District's Director of Community Engagement and Communications, Erica Leacino. This fund was established and the community's response to the fund has been overwhelming. The proceeds raised from the donations to the fund have provided for weekly mobile food pantries that have served District 200 families at our schools and for Jewel Target All Day Family Foods gift cards for District 200 families in need of food assistance. I'm so proud of the district and Foundation's efforts to respond and meet this challenge and so thankful to Vicky and Erica for their leadership and hard work to make the Food Insecurity Crisis Fund not only possible, but so responsive to the needs of our communities. Our communities are so blessed to be served by these individuals, the district and the Foundation. And comment number three says, District, dear District 200 School Board, I'm a parent of three District 200 students. My oldest graduated in January 2020. I also have a sophomore at Wheaton Warrenville South High School and an eighth grader at Edison. I'm disappointed with the state of District 200's e-learning. I get that we are in unprecedented times. However, I have friends and family who have the fortune of being in districts throughout the state and country or attend private schools nearby that have developed e-learning and were able to execute it. They feel their children are actually learning new material and advancing. My eighth grader's algebra teacher told his class they won't be learning anything new, but not to worry, their ninth grade teacher will catch them up. How is that acceptable? My eighth grader's principal told me that most of her teachers have the distraction of children at home. Please discuss this and I appreciate your time.
Okay, thank you to our public for those comments. Next up on the agenda is the superintendent's report. I believe Dr. Schuler has a few things he'd like to share with us.
Hey, Rod, can I share off my screen real quick?
Yep, one second. Should be able to.
Still saying I'm disabled doing that.
Still?
Oh, now I got it. Thank you.
Yep.
All right. Board members, I'm hoping that you can see my screen. I've got a couple of updates for you and I just want to kind of scroll down through the updates because there's a few visuals. When I get down to the bottom, I will make sure that this document is uploaded with the superintendent's report, but I thought since we're doing this remotely, this might be an easier way. So, a couple of things that I want to share with the Board tonight. First, just a reminder about our graduation plans. Please remember that we'll celebrate and honor our graduating students next Saturday, May 23rd, with a live virtual graduation ceremony. We North is at 10, Wheaton Warrenville South is at 12 o'clock. The ceremony will be aired via our YouTube channel. It's going to feature some speeches from students and staff selected by our graduating class, some student musical selections, and individual recognition of each of our graduates with a picture and their name announced. Seniors have already received their cap and gowns and a senior yard sign, and on May 20th, each of our high schools is going to release a senior honors ceremony. On May 21st, we're going to be distributing senior care pa-- special senior care packages at each of our high schools. And we are still hopeful that after the release of the graduation ceremony as we move into the summer and when conditions allow, we know that that picture on the graduation stage is something that's important to our seniors and their families, and we're going to do our best to create that opportunity as conditions allow as we move into the summer. I do want to send a quick thank you to Erica Charlie, our, and especially our senior class officers who came together. They reviewed the feedback from the graduation survey and identified the elements that were most important, both in a in a virtual graduation event and also in an opportunity should have presented itself this summer, and we did our very best to honor their feedback and build that into our planning as we bring closure. So, we really look forward to seeing that virtual graduation ceremony. I wanted to share with the Board, obviously, there were a couple of public comments tonight about the remote learning or the e-learning experience. We do very much value the feedback, not only of our parent community, but feedback from our teachers and feedback from our students. There are four surveys that are currently launched within the district. We have a parent survey that's being done via telephone to a targeted population meant to certainly represent our student population within the district. We're targeting direct contact with 700 families or parents to ask about their experience during e-learning. We just launched this week a survey that's going to all of our teachers. We launched at the end of last week a survey that's going to our elementary students, and we're launching ideally by the end of this week, a survey that's going to go to our middle and high school students. And so, I anticipate in June being able to bring to the Board a summary of that survey feedback so that certainly you can see that experience, but most important, we're going to utilize that feedback as we talk in a few minutes through our planning for summer and into next fall. Undoubtedly, while we don't know exactly what next fall is going to look like, it will not look exactly the same certainly as this year, even if we are operating in a blended or remote feedback. We want to take this kind of what we learned from parents, students, and teachers and make sure that we continue to build upon that experience. Just a reminder to the Board that we have an employee retirement recognition coming up. That's going to happen virtually as well. But I did ask for a little bit of help from board members, and I'm still going to take you up on that if you're willing to help us to deliver a special recognition thank you package to our 48 retirees. We're planning to deliver that care package to their house as a thank you. So, stay tuned as I ask for your help, I believe. Within the next, hopefully, two weeks, we'll have those packages ready to go and to be delivered. Wanted to mention that Melissa is going to be providing an update a little bit later in our agenda about our learning plans for summer and fall in light of the end of this school year. We are running both our extended school year program and our high school summer school program remotely this summer. Registration is already out. It has been collected for those two programs. Extended school year is not new, but our high school summer school program was previously offered through ELO. We're offering that directly this year and have a good solid registration for that. So, that will continue through the summer. Any of our summer camps that we had scheduled in the month of June, those were primarily sport recreation camps. They have been canceled for the month of June. We're going to continue to monitor and evaluate conditions and guidance as we look at anything else that was scheduled toward the latter part of the summer. So, for our community, certainly, they can stay tuned for that. And then I just want to walk you through very quickly because this is going to be context for, I think, the three board reports that you're going to see a little bit later tonight on our agenda. So, from the onset of kind of this new mode of learning in the district, the district built a core team that's really kind of guided all of the planning that we've done to try to pivot and remove to the e-learning environment. And so, one of the things that we were hoping to see by now, and we haven't, is guidance from ISBE and from the state of Illinois about what learning may look like in the fall and some guidance documents on that. We haven't seen it yet, and so we've got a team in the district that really has begun significant work looking at what fall might look like. We know and understand that that works got to align with anything that we get from ISBE, anything that we get from the Center for Disease Control or our local health departments. But we can't wait. We've got to get going as we navigate through that planning. And so, we've done that really with three concepts in mind, or I guess three plans in mind, right? With Plan A being, what would it look like if schools were to start the same way they did at the start of the current school year? Truth be told, I don't see that option as very likely, certainly not by the start of the school year as as you look ahead to kind of what projections look like, but obviously, if we can, we very much want to get students back in our building as soon as we possibly can. Whether that be across the board, certainly in certain levels, our goal is to get kids back in when it's safe to do so to continue instruction in our buildings, but we will see what that is. Plan B, that second option, would be some type of a hybrid option where if we can get students in perhaps in in smaller amounts, smaller quantities, we recognize that our schools vary greatly in the number of students that are in there. And so, there's a lot of discussion about kind of what you might call a hybrid model that would allow you to operate under whatever guidance the Centers for Disease Control or ISBE have in place. And so, we're beginning to investigate a variety of options and kind of understand what that could look like. There are some states that have already issued some documents that start to project to potentially what alternating schedules might be able to look like right in a way that allow you to safely operate as well as some discussions on perhaps phasing in the opening of schools, starting perhaps with younger students, smaller buildings, and kind of phasing our way up. So, we're looking at all that under Plan B. And then Plan C would be an option where everybody continues to operate in e-learning. Again, I'm not phrasing this as the same option that we have right now because obviously with opportunity to plan through the summer, we know even that experience will continue to look different than obviously it did through this year. But that really serves the foundation of our work. So, how are we going to approach it? We've built seven work teams that are going to kind of function under this core team that we've put together and met. So, as I just scroll down through here, you're going to see first the four work teams that are going to be doing a lot of our heavy, heavy lift as we consider those options in the way that school might look. We've got a team that's going to focus on wellness. That's both physical wellness as well as our SEL programs. There's a lot out there about how even health offices will have to operate and the importance of making sure that we have the ability to keep apart students that might be in the health office because they genuinely are exhibiting symptoms versus students that might need to come to the health office for medication or for another visit. And so, there's a lot of planning that's going to have to go into how we do that as well as just how we take care of kids' emotional health. We've got a whole team that's going to focus simply on school operations with physical distancing. And so, we've begun already to do some of the work of looking at, as you look at physical distancing, right, a lot of discussion on the importance of keeping people six feet apart. What does that look like in a classroom? How can you organize desks? What does that mean in terms of how many kids you can actually put in a classroom? Because in a typical classroom of eight to 900 square feet, you're going to have less kids if you're keeping everybody six feet apart. And so, we've really got to look at all of the elements that would go into, how can you run a school and adhere to that? How do you plan for lunch? How do you plan for transition times? How do you plan for the way that kids would move through the building? How do you determine which programs may or may not be able to run simply based on the inherent nature of how kids might need to interact? So, there's a ton that's going to have to be done in that area. Of course, Melissa will continue to lead the team that looks at all things instruction and how we continue to scale up for instruction that might be delivered, fully learning or in some type of blended experience. Obviously, we've got some experience through our blended and through our ELO classes and through obviously what was done this year that we can scale up to. Rod is going to continue to lead the team that's looking at technology deployment, both student device. We've talked with the Board about a device deployment next year that looks very different in at the secondary level and getting devices out to students in a one-to-one format at the start of the year so that we're ready. Rod obviously will address all things student technology as well as the systems that have to sit behind operating in either an e-learning or a blended learning environment. And then, as I go down, I apologize, I went a little too fast. We've got some departments that are going to have to do work responsive to the plans that have been identified up above. So, Bill and his facilities operations teams are beginning to look at some of the short-term, longer-term modifications that might have to be in play in our facilities, issues around hand washing, issues around sanitizing and the ability to continue to sanitize hard surfaces and clean hard surfaces during the day and obviously at the end of the school day. Bill will continue to look at issues around budget. We've got a discussion later on your agenda tonight that begins to map that work out. Charlie, of course, will look at the team that talks about human resource. So, again, as you contemplate some of the discussions earlier about numbers of students in classrooms, it may well mean that we have to utilize staff in a different way than what we had anticipated utilizing staff for if we to operate with different numbers, and that's got a lot of HR implications. It's got some implications as we obviously look at our two collective bargaining agreements and manage those conversations. And so, Charlie will lead that work, and then, of course, Erica will continue to lead the communication work, both as we plan for information we need to share out as well as look for opportunities to continue to receive feedback, hear feedback, and build that into our planning. And then, just the very last thing that I want to give you a look at is kind of how that whole structure will work as we continue our work into the summer. So, again, kind of at the top of this little diagram, you have the core governance team. We've got about 23 individuals identified for that core team, including administrative staff, building administrative, district administrative staff, representation from our two collective bargaining groups, representation from our health services team, as well as some targeted teacher engagement and represented representation. The seven kind of subject-specific teams will continue to do their work and funnel information up to the core team, and then obviously that work's got to be carried on to each of our buildings that are going to have to have their own work teams established as we start to really contemplate a lot of this work, right? So, realize at this point in the year, generally, our master schedules, especially for our secondary schools, are already developed and in play. And so, some of this work could have significant implications on how we go about rescheduling, readjusting, and so, needless to say, it is going to be an incredibly busy summer as we try to navigate through all of this. But again, this is all done really with the mindset that we want to get students back in our schools as it's safe to do so. We don't know exactly what that's going to look like, but we believe planning through this structure will allow us to really turn over any potential rock as we try to figure out how it is that we can go about doing that. I should mention in this diagram, obviously, the Board of Education is not represented in this diagram. We will continue to work through you, obviously, both at board meetings and through any of your committees on this work. So, it's not to suggest that the Board won't be engaged in this planning structure, but I just wanted to kind of help you see how we reconceptualized our work both now and kind of moving forward into the summer. So, you're going to hear a couple of updates on the agenda tonight that I think align to some of these work structures, but I really wanted to set this for you as a foundation as we continue to get a lot of questions on what's fall going to look like, right? And the honest answer to that still continues to be, I'm not entirely sure. But we're going to do our very best to provide opportunities for our students to certainly engage in instruction at the highest level and obviously as soon as conceivably possible back in our schools.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Schuler. We certainly appreciate the complexity of what you have ahead of you and the entire leadership team. Are there any questions or comments from board members about Dr. Schuler's comments?
I have one.
Go ahead, Jim.
Yeah, you know what, you know, I'm going to assume that we're not going to be fully engaged, you know, in classrooms come the fall. And under that assumption, what do you feel or what is the, I'll call it the Illinois State Board of Education or other schools conceive the impact to be on, let's say, SAT scores? You know, and that consists of many things. You know, it's the teacher's ability to, you know, deliver educational quality as well as the students be able to work in that environment. Do we have any feel? I mean, one of our 2020 goals has, you know, been, you know, to achieve higher levels of achievement in SAT scores or ACT scores, depending which one we're talking about. But, you know, I'm just trying to get a feel for that. That's the question I get from people that, you know, what do we see? How much are we losing out here, I guess, is maybe another way to say. I'm concerned about that.
Yeah, so I guess two ways that I answer that. Number one, I think you're going to see an update a little bit later this evening from Melissa that is really addressing that very question of what other opportunities are we creating both this summer and into the fall to help address that, Jim. It is undeniable that there are challenges that come from this, right? I also would tell you that I don't know that the challenge that all kids are experiencing is experienced equally by all of our students. There are some students that I think are better positioned through support that they may have even outside of the school building and their in their home to navigate through this and engage in a level that perhaps is a little stronger than, you know, some other students have been able to. So I could not honestly give you a quantifiable impact on something like an SAT score. I don't even know that we will know that for a little while because our kids didn't take the SAT here in the spring. And I don't ensure even at what point, you know, that resumes and we start to see that quantifiable impact. But it's going to be there, right? Make no mistake, I think there is going to be some impact from this. I think at the same time, there have been some learning opportunities that have been opened up that are probably not measured by an SAT score. And I think there's some really valuable lessons that are going to carry kids, carry with kids as they step beyond school. But I think on some of our traditional measures, there will be an impact. There will be an impact.
All right. Any other questions from board members? Okay. Thank you, Dr. Schuler. Next on our agenda tonight is the consent agenda. We actually have two consent agendas tonight. The first one has 18 items. The number one is acceptance of gift from Longfellow Elementary School PTA. Number two is acceptance of gift from Franklin Middle School. Number three is approval of the consolidated district plan. Number four is approval of the district to pay to area occupational education system. Otherwise, the board number five is approval of the IHSA annual renewal. Number six is approval of the ROE permit applications for scheduled 2020 summer work. Number seven is adoption of the Board of Education meeting calendar for the 2020-2021 school year. Number eight is approval of a contract amendment with Organic Life LLC. Number nine is approval of Organic Life LLC K8 Food Service Management Contract Renewal. Number 10 is approval of a resolution appointing the treasurer and approving the treasurer's bond. Number 11 is approval of the treasurer's bond coverage. Number 12 is approval to dispose of surplus technology assets. Number 13 is approval to renew ClassLink software solution. Number 14 is approval of Blackboard Connect and web hosting renewal. Number 15 is approval of purchase, approval to purchase smartboards and mounts for the Jefferson Early Childhood Center. Number 16 is approval of Bill's payable payroll. Number 17 is approval of minutes from April 8, 2020, open and approval to destroy recordings of closed sessions prior to December 2018 as allowable by law. And number 18 is approval of personal report to include employment, resignation, retirement and leave of absence of administrative certified classified and non-union staff. Are there 18, are there any items board members want removed from the consent agenda? Just go ahead and unmute and say there are. Okay. Doctor Schuler, do you have any information to share with us on any of these items?
Just one comment that I'll make because I think it was a question that was asked earlier under public comment. Item 15, which is the approval of the technology for Jefferson Early Childhood Center. I just want to call the board's attention back to when you approved that project, that two separate pieces, right? A referendum question did go to the community that simply sought authorization to build the building, right? And to do that through a lease agreement. But the board will remember when you approved the total project budget, included in that project budget were some post-construction costs designated to be funded by the district or by the board. One of those was technology. So this was a part of the budget that you approved back with the project. It's just we're making the actual purchase of the boards that are going to be used at the Early Childhood Center. And so that this is not new money that wasn't anticipated. Again, I think as you see the regular monthly construction reports, we continue to operate not only on schedule, but we are under budget for the entire project. So it's not new money. This was a part of the total project.
Correct. Thank you. So now I'm going to go just kind of through board members, name by name. If, when I mention your name, if you have any questions or comments for Dr. Schuler or staff, just go ahead and chime in. I'll give it about a two or three second pause. So first, this is Crabtree. Any questions or comments? How about Mrs. Booton? Mrs. Erickson, any question or comments? Okay, Mr. Hanlon?
No comment. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Rob. Mr. Matheson?
Yeah, and that Jefferson piece, didn't we, we approved, I mean, you know, a large number of dollars for equipping Jefferson. That was separate and part of that whole project approval. What was that total? I'm thinking it was $300,000 or something, wasn't it?
Yeah, so there were two different pieces to that, Jim. One, under furniture fixtures and equipment, I think we carried a $400,000 budget in the total project. And then there was a separate line item for technology equipment at $175,000. So both of those elements were a part of that original project budget.
Okay. And also haven't we sought some grant, you know, gifts and contributions that help offset some of those costs as well?
We have for the playground, which was a third kind of separate post-construction piece. So in total, you had about $1.2 million in post-construction costs that, again, was furniture fixtures, equipment, technology, playground, demolition and abatement in the existing building with some site restoration and a few of those pieces.
Okay. Do we have, I know it's coming up later, but we don't have a dedication date yet for Jefferson to, you know, break the bottle of champagne or anything, huh?
We had a dedication date identified. We were actually originally looking at, I believe, the Sunday before the school year started. But we kind of are just sitting and hold a little bit. I think before we, we will do a dedication either way before we open the building. But I think the question will be, how big of a dedication can it be? How many people can we have there? Can we open it up to kind of broader community? Or do we need to perhaps consider it in smaller groups? We also, obviously, you mentioned we've got a group that have pledged some donations. I think in total, we've raised or have pledges for about $100,000 in support. And so we also want to make sure that all of those individuals that generously donated to that project have an opportunity to be recognized and be a part of a dedication ceremony in some way. So we had a plan, but as with a lot of things, it's kind of, we're a little bit of a wait and see.
Okay, great. Thanks.
Okay, thanks, Jim. Mr. Long, any questions or comments?
No.
Okay. And then just one clarification for myself. On number five, the IHSA rule, I note that that was no cost going in for next year?
Correct. I don't think IHSA has charged member dues in a number of years, Brad. So that's just a renewal to continue to be a part of that association, which gives us the opportunity to participate should we want to. So there isn't a cost and it doesn't mean you're locked into anything in particular. It's just the opportunity to be a part of that organization.
Okay, thank you. Okay, can I have a motion in a second to approve the consent agenda as presented? Just go ahead and chime in.
I'm sorry. Oh, second.
Okay, I missed who that was. Who moved?
Gina.
Gina moved and was that Susan that seconded?
Yes.
Okay. So I will go ahead and call the roll. Mrs. Erickson?
Yes.
And Mrs. Booton?
Yes.
Mrs. Crabtree?
Yes.
Mr. Matheson? Mr. Matheson, do you approve the consent agenda as presented?
Yes, now I unmuted. Yes, I approve.
Mr. Long?
Yes.
And Mr. Hanlon?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well. So the consent agenda has passed as presented. We have a second consent agenda tonight, as I mentioned, with just one item on it, which is the acceptance of a resolution made in depositories. Are there, is any board member would like to move this off of the consent agenda and onto an action item? Okay, Dr. Schuler, any information or clarification on this?
Really no additional information. I believe the reason we have a second consent agenda item is that we have a board member that'll need to abstain from this vote. So we pushed it to its own consent agenda.
Okay, thank you. Okay, can I have a motion in a second to approve consent agenda? Number two is presented. And if you, as you make your motion, a second, if you could say your name, that would help me.
Chris, so moved.
Okay, thank you.
Rob, a second.
Okay. So I'll call the roll. Mrs. Crabtree?
Yes.
Mr. Hanlon?
Yes.
Mr. Long?
Yes.
Mr. Matheson?
I have to abstain as a board member of the Wheaton Bank and Trust. And by the way, I just have to say briefly that, you know, it's the community banks that have been really, really helpful to the local communities on some of the PPP loans. And this is why we need to make, continue to make deposits in these kind of, you know, local-based businesses and so on. I really appreciate it. Thank you. But I abstain.
Okay. Mrs. Booton?
Yes.
And Mrs. Erickson?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well. So the second consent agenda has been approved as presented. Next, we will move to our action items. We do have one action item tonight, which is approval of flexibility for board policy 6.300 related to graduation requirements. Dr. Schuler, would you like to introduce this?
Yes, be happy to. So one of the governor's executive orders, I think it was Executive Order 202031, and led to some emergency rules by the Illinois State Board of Education that granted some flexibility around graduation requirements. I want to be clear that this was not done by the governor of the state board with the intent of diminishing what it means to achieve a high school diploma. But it was done based somewhat on what I mentioned a little bit earlier. And that's that there are some students that have had a difficult time engaging in e-learning and remote instruction through circumstances that may be no fault of their own. That may be the reality of some of the challenges, perhaps, that they face outside of school. And so what the executive order in ISB did was that it recognized that students that may have struggled this semester and may therefore have achieved an incomplete in a particular course would not be held from the ability to get a diploma. And so in short, it reduced the overall graduation requirements by 3.5 credits. It's about a half a credit in each of the core content areas that were reduced. Our graduation requirements in District 200 are already higher than what the state had in place. We require 24 credits for graduation, which is already beyond, by I think a little over three credits what the state requires. And so what we're recommending to the board is that you grant the flexibility to our local policy 6.300, consistent with the executive order and the emergency rules issued by ISB that would lower our graduation floor to 20.5 credits and allow us to be consistent with that. We really don't, in working with the high schools, we don't have that many students that this applies to, but we do have some. I think as we've worked with the high schools, we've had, we've had about 30 students that may have been caught in this if not for this, I'd call it, emergency flexibility.
So just for clarification, we're not changing the policy, right? We're not posting for public comment. We're just providing some temporary flexibility for this year.
Correct.
Okay, thank you. So we'll just go around one by one again. If any board members have questions or comments. First, I guess, Mr. Hanlon?
No comment. Thank you.
Okay, thanks. Mrs. Erickson? Mrs. Crabtree?
No.
Mrs. Booton?
I think this is what you just said, but it's only for this year, right? And not any following years?
Correct. That, to be honest with you, that's why we took this approach of recommending that you provide temporary flexibility for this graduating class. That leaves your policy intact for future years.
Thank you.
Okay, Mrs. Math, Mr. Matheson? Did I cover Gina, Mrs. Erickson? Did I ask you? All right, Mr. Long?
No questions.
Okay, and I have no questions either. I think I got everybody. Okay, can I have a motion in a second to approve the flexibility for board policy 6.300 graduation requirements as presented? And again, say your name, please.
Dave, so moved.
Okay, can I have a second?
Second.
Okay, we'll call the roll. Mr. Long?
Yes.
And Mrs. Erickson?
Yes.
Mr. Matheson?
Yes.
Mr. Hanlon?
Yes.
Mrs. Crabtree?
Yes.
Mrs. Booton?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well. Okay, the action item to approve flexibility for the board policy 6.300 graduation requirements has passed as presented. Next, we move to, we have three separate oral reports tonight. So first is an update on the financial impact of COVID-19. I'll turn it over to Dr. Schuler.
Thank you, Mr. Paulson. I'm going to actually hand it right on to Mr. Farley, who's going to walk the board through a document that I think he's going to take over the screen and share with you.
I'm working on it. Let's see, it's back there. Can you see it, Dr. Schuler? Okay. I can't see it, so I just wanted to make sure. Thank you. As the board is aware, back in January, we did a financial planning model that we shared with the board. And obviously, a lot has changed in these last few months as we look to move forward here. What we put together for the board is kind of a look at what's the impact of what's happened in the last three months could have on this year's budget as well as next year's budget. And I'll say, as with a lot of things, there's a lot of uncertainty still abound in what's going to happen next year as we wait to hear a number of different things. I know the state legislature is convening and part of their discussion is going to be about the state budget. But we're still in a holding pattern here with what's going to happen at the state level. And I'll go through the revenues first, the expenditures, and then we'll talk a little bit about some of the other potential issues that are out there that we're addressing. First of all, I'll start with property taxes, obviously, our largest source of revenue. Back a month, about a month ago, the counties started to look at ways to offer some relief to taxpayers who may be struggling because of the impact of COVID. And eventually got to a point where at the end of April, they approved a resolution that allowed folks that can indicate or show a need to delay their property taxes to September due to impact of COVID. So there is some relief there. So there is some relief there for some of the community to do that. So we're not sure. We receive our June, our taxes, the majority in June and September. So we're waiting to kind of see where we are on a cash flow basis as far as the impact of June. You know, again, that's, we don't know what the number of requests that the treasurers have received yet for our school district, but we're continuing to monitor that. For FY twenty-one, the CPI is already known for the levy that will occur in later this fall for that levy. But the CPI, we're continuing to track where it's at. As of right now, it's point three for April. So it has come down quite a bit. Obviously, I always mention that the levy, that the price of gasoline seems to be the main driver of the CPI. So as gas has come down quite a bit, so is the CPI, and we'll continue to monitor that. But it'll really be the CPI at the end of this calendar year will impact the, the twenty-two, or the twenty-one levy, which will impact FY twenty-two. So that issue was pushed out a little bit, but it's something we continue to monitor because it will have an impact as we look to the future beyond just next year's budget. Corporate personal property replacement tax, there is no impact on the current year as that money continues to flow in. But again, as, as reduced earnings in corporations, there could be, there may be an impact that we're anticipating. We just don't know what it is yet. We get an estimate usually in August of what that amount will be. The last few years, we've got, received more money than the estimate, but we are going to have to monitor it as the, you know, impact of COVID obviously will impact corporations and their earnings. Student registration and fees. Boards aware that we have been in the pro- or in the process of reimbursing fees for all the kindergarten, spring athletics, and certain activities, space available fees, some other, smaller fees. We still don't know the overall amount yet. I think Dr. Schuler shared what the eighty K amount is probably around two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Sports is a lot less. Fortunately, the schools are just starting to input the sports fees for the spring in, so there really wasn't a lot there, but we'll know those numbers pretty soon. As we move forward, generally, we put the registration fees out as of June first. And we offer that early bird special for parents to pay between June and July first. Staff is recommending that we delay the rollout of those fees until September rather than June first. Obviously, similar to what the county did, we're trying to offer the community some respite as far as paying those fees, and we'll have a better feel for what the school year is going to look like in come September. So that's one item we would like the board to weigh in on as far as that goes. It will have somewhat of a, on a cash basis, a cash. Generally, those fees come in in June, so about five hundred thousand. So there is some impact on the cash basis, but the, for an accrual basis, it will not have an impact. Rental fees, we shut the district down, all of our rentals for about, you know, for a three and a half month period for the rest of the budget. We're probably going to see a forty thousand dollar shortfall there. We have a number of different rentals that make up about a hundred and fifty thousand dollar budget each year. So, you know, that budget will be cut short based on inability to rent our facilities. Also, most likely, summer rentals are canceled, and beyond that, we're not really sure. So we're going to have to continue to monitor what happens with the state guidelines and when we can open up to rentals again. So we have been in touch with all of our contacts with the rentals, and we'll keep them informed. Food services, obviously, the way we provide meals changed dramatically once the decision was made back in March to close schools. We are, it was recommended that the district continue to serve meals to free and reduced students as well as basically any student under the age of eighteen, eighteen and under, I should say. We don't know what the overall impact of that's going to be. There was different reimbursement rates that are included. We are serving somewhere between one thousand and thirteen hundred meals on a daily basis to students out in the community at the four middle schools, Johnson Elementary Schools, and the sixteen sites out in the community. So the district will continue, continue that through June thirtieth, as the state has waived the non-congregate requirement through June thirtieth, and that may be extended. So we'll keep the board apprised as how that will work. But we plan to continue service. It may look a little different starting June fourth, but we're continuing to look at that. Next year is yet to be determined. You know, as Dr. Schuler mentioned earlier, how we if, if students are back in the fall, how we feed them, how we keep that social distancing. We've had conversations with our food service carrier about different models already to determine how that may look, but we continue to work through that. We don't know how that will impact yet until we have a little bit clearer direction about how we're serving meals. Interest revenue, we, in the January model, we talked about a reduction in interest revenues. Rates started to come down. They obviously crashed beyond that with the COVID, once the COVID issue started. And so we've had to reduce that down a couple hundred thousand more than we already did. We're at about nine hundred thousand to start of this budget year. In January, we had knocked it down to five, over five hundred thousand, and now we're down to about three hundred thousand in anticipated interest revenues. So for this year, though, we, we've pretty much met all our targets for interest earnings, which is good. But moving forward, we're, we're continuing to see that number come down. State funding, as I mentioned, that's a, a big item where that's to be determined. All of our evidence-based funding is continuing to come in on time. The state made the second categorical payment, which ISB vouched back in December on May first. So we've received two of our payments for this year. There's two more to come. Last year, those came in May and early August, so that's kind of the benchmark. We are waiting to see what will happen. And again, it's an unknown at this time when those final two payments will be returned to us. As far as next year, we're going to have to continue to keep an eye on it. We're anticipating that there won't be any additional funding. Generally, the state has pushed about three hundred million into the evidence-based funding formula, which is equated to about three hundred thousand dollars or so for the school district. We had that in the model originally. We're gonna have to pull that out and hope that that is all that we see. There is a potential that they could draw back even more money each year is the benchmark for the whole harmless. But there is a mechanism within the formula to allow to have it reduced because we're a tier-three district. They want to fund the tier ones and twos and make sure to keep them as whole as possible, so that some of that could involve tier-three and tier-four districts losing money that we've received. This is the third year of EBF, and we received about a million dollars in additional funding over that time through that formula. So we'll continue to monitor that. Moving on to some of the federal programs, the National School Lunch Program revenues will be lower because we're not serving as many meals. Again, we are getting some reimbursement from the federal government for the program as we run it now. For next year, applications for free and reduced are, are most likely going to rise if the economic situation continues. So we may see additional funding for our National School Lunch service, but again, it'll really depend on how that service looks. The next item is Medicaid, and, and there's a hole. I won't read everything on, on that description. Thank you to Erica Ekstrom for providing some of the details as it-
Hey, Bill, somebody's gotta scroll down a little bit. Hope you're off the screen now.
Nope, sorry. Am I moving?
Yes.
Okay. So Medicaid, we can, you continue to provide services. Then that reimbursement is, you know, we're gonna have to wait and see how the impact of the, the change to e-learning is going to impact that. We obviously can't fully replicate the school-based services that we provide. So that funding for this year may be impacted, and next year is yet to be determined based on really what's going to happen operationally for those services for the entire year. Moving on to title.
Before, Bill, before we go on and go to expenses, on revenues, I have a couple of questions. One is, if, if the real estate taxes are delayed, whether it's the first or the second, there's a period of interest-free, and then after that, there is interest-bearing. So if people can't make their current year's taxes come September, there's gonna be a delay further, and they get charged interest. Do we get part, do we get that interest passed back to us?
No, that stays at the county.
It does. Why? Because, I mean, we have to, we may have to borrow if that is a big delay. I mean, is there anything we can do to try to head that off a little bit through talking to the county and saying that, you know, because of these unusual circumstances, you know, we're gonna have to borrow that we wouldn't typically have to do it, et cetera. So I'd like to get some look into.
Yeah, we could talk to Gwen about that, and I, I'm, I'm pretty sure the interest does not get redistributed, but I'll check on that. The other thing that you bring up about that revenue stream is we don't know what our collection rate's going to be yet in September because of the financial impact, so we'll have to continue to monitor that as well.
Yeah, and this food cost one, again, we're continuing to serve students, more students than low-income type students, right?
We, you know, we're serving about twelve hundred meals a day on average. We don't know if they're free and reduced. Obviously, the way we set up our delivery was to get to areas where we know our free and reduced populations are at. It doesn't, I would, I would guess that the majority of those students are free or new students. There could be some students who don't qualify that are taking meals. They may not meet the requirement, but they still, you know, may need the meals because of their parents' financial situation and just haven't filled out the form, but we are-
Can we claim, can we claim on those to get reimbursement or is it work?
Yes, we can, we can claim all of those. We can claim all of those. So every meal that we're serving, we will fill out and on a monthly basis of file with the federal government, with the USDA to get reimbursement.
As I recall, when we negotiated the meal lunch contract, the food contract last, last year, I think it was, we, we changed it. And I thought there was something we didn't qualify for reimbursement on because we changed the nature of what we were serving.
Yeah, our high schools, our high schools were taken off the National School Lunch Program, so we could offer more choices and to our high school students. So, yeah, the high schools, but under this program now, all students are claimed as free, whether they're free, reduced, or paid. And, and whether they're high school or non-high, you know, anybody eighteen and under are claimed as a free lunch under this program. So our designation as, as a high schools not being on the program does not matter at this point.
Okay, and or as we move into twenty twenty-one, I, my, that's my biggest concern, that we may have to go back to something in order to get reimbursed. You know, particularly if this goes on and we continue to fund more students, or, or just more students become eligible.
Yeah, correct.
Yeah, so would we have to change something there, what we offer?
You know, again, it's an operational issue. I don't know if our, we, I don't, we would have to put our high schools, make a decision to put our high schools back on the National School Lunch Program, which we're not at a point to do that, and I don't think we would do that at this point. We're gonna have to let the, let it play out and see what direction they go.
Yeah, I'd just be concerned that we, you know, we miss out on a big revenue reduction or something that we, you know, we may be needing in the future, or next year in particular. So keep that in mind as well. Okay, those are the revenue questions I had. Thanks.
Okay, I have one more title, title funds. You know, Mrs. Murphy's office tracks those title funds, and we are submitting for as much as we can, but there are obviously some, because of the way we are providing service at this point with remote learning, we may not be able to access all of those funds that we had budgeted, but they do carry over. So that's, that's a good, at least one good thing. The, looking for twenty twenty-one, the federal government through the CARES program has given us an allocation of approximately one million dollars. The state did apply for that CARES funding, and our designation is about a million dollars. There is a, there is a share with private schools that's still being worked out. And we have not received the final number from ISB yet as to what our share is versus private school share, but we're continuing to watch that. There are no supplement or supply issues relative to how we use that money, but it's really expected to be used on how we provide remote learning and other technology services and meeting children's needs educationally as we work through this time of COVID. We also applied for the FEMA grant for costs associated with cleaning and purchasing of products and things like that. So we have our name in the hopper for that as well, for that federal grant money that's out there for those type of expenses. I'll stop there. Any other revenue questions? I know Jim asked a couple. Are there any other questions relative to revenues? Okay, hearing none, I will move on to expenses. Health insurance, we we anticipate, you know, our claims will go down as the, the health industry kind of shut down to address the needs of COVID.
Bill, can you move that slide again?
Oh, sorry.
Okay, keep going.
Sorry.
I'll, I'll do it, Bill. I'll show the page.
Thank you. Perfect.
Okay, moving on to expenses. As I mentioned, we have continued to monitor our claims history. We did receive our renewal. It did go up about six percent. We had three percent in the model. So that, that is going to impact about four hundred thousand dollars over where we were in January. If you recall, last year, we had no increase when we anticipated a three percent increase. It ended up being flat. The pool as a whole, from a health standard, had, had, had a tough year, but we're gonna continue to monitor, you know, how the, the claims are, are working through this, end of this year, even though we have our renewal. Open enrollment begins here next week, and we'll see where we are with, with the overall participation in the, in the health program. One of the financial impacts of remote learning is our substitute teacher line item. Will obviously be down this year as we have not had a heavy need for substitute teachers, obviously because of the remote learning. Next year, we're yet to be determined. We have to obviously figure out those operational issues that we face as we move forward. Energy costs, obviously, we've shut down our buildings, more or less. We do have our custodial staff in working. So we're pretty much through the heating season, or at least we thought until last week. But we, you know, our gas costs are pretty set, and our electric costs should be down. We don't anticipate having to turn on our air conditioners or anything of that nature. Maybe some of the smaller units for office areas as people trickle in. But again, our energy costs, water as well should taper off, but we don't know those exact numbers yet. And obviously, next year is a TBD as we move forward. COVID nineteen supplies, we do have, have purchased minimal supplies so far, some masks. We did, when this started, pooled all of the nurse, nurses items that had, were out in the schools and trainers. And so we had some items to start, but we are now starting to purchase some of these items, so we have those available. And then for next year, there will, we anticipate there is going to be a higher need, as Dr. Schuler mentioned. We have that operational operations committee, subcommittee that's looking at all of those items, and will continue to move forward and, and purchase what we need. And maybe, again, that stuff we can claim through that FEMA grant. Capital projects, as of now, they remain on schedule. We've, if you've been by any of our schools, we have got a jumpstart on a few schools, roofing projects, and some other projects. We're trying to be mindful of the final pickup of school supplies and desks and lockers that are being cleaned out, and some of the graduation activities that are, we're going on at our schools. As we move forward with, we'll have to take a look at our ability, again, with Sherman Durges, to move forward with that program and how we fund that, given the financial condition we face moving forward. That would be for the summer of twenty-one projects. Uh, transportation, we do have reduced costs because we're not uh, uh, fully funding our main contract, nor are we, um, uh, some of the smaller contracts are out of district transportation and taxi service. So uh, but that will impact our claim. If our expenditures go down, the claim lags a year behind. So uh, we will see some impact of our mandated categorical payments from the state uh, for that reason and maybe for others based on state's ability to uh, fund those type of items. There may be some proration that happens, uh, which has occurred in the past. Our contract for next year is a two percent increase with Illinois Central. Um, we're negotiating with taxi right now. Um, and uh, you know, all other operationals are under, operational uh, items are under consideration as we continue determine what next year will look like from a school year standpoint. Um, technology, there's no uh, big impact. Rod did, I think, in the board is updated, purchased some hotspots so we could get e-learning out to students that didn't have the access uh, to wifi and also the purchase of what we're on right now, the Zoom for the district. So we could uh, obviously, you get these type of meetings set up and, and uh, work through some of those issues. So I think there was some uh, security reasons and other that uh, the purchase of the Zoom was beneficial to our school district. Um, moving forward, we're still working on, on the advancement of the one-to-one implementation at the high school level. Um, again, this is some of the uh, items in Rod's budget where we may see an increase uh, that we can tie to that CARES funding. So uh, we'll continue to work with Rod and, and his department, how that, uh, how that looks for next year as we move forward. Any questions on expenditures?
I have a couple. Uh, first off on the uh, let me just see which ones I got here. On the health insurance, you know, part of that, that six percent increase, that's just the, what I'll call based on claims of the past. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Do we anticipate? Now, we currently, we pick up, uh, uh, if someone's spouse is employer, is employed and has the opportunity to get a health insurance, you know, there's some way that gets covered or they can't, you know, they have to pay for it if they want to be on our program, et cetera.
That's correct. There's a spousal surcharge for those that are on our PPO and their spouse has access to health insurance at their plan. They pay a monthly, a monthly spousal surcharge.
Okay, I'm concerned that we need to consider a additional cost if people are becoming unemployed. You know, that may be an alternative that we may be hidden in those numbers. So uh, you know, when is the, when is enrollment start on that?
Uh, May twentieth.
Okay, because I, I'm concerned that that, what happens if somebody loses their job in the next month or so? You know, can they then make a, or look into the spousal or? You know, if they weren't covered?
If, if somebody, yes, if a, if an employee of ours, their spouse loses their job and they no longer have access to healthcare, then that surcharge would go away. Uh, conversely, if they aren't on our plan and, and um, their, you know, their spouse loses it, that's a life change, at least, and lose their job, that is a life-changing event and they could come on our plan.
And that would cost us money, a lot of money potentially.
Correct.
Yeah, okay. I think we need to give that consideration is my point. Uh, number one. Number two, you know, we're going into e-learning, obviously, or remote learning, whatever the right term is here. Uh, you know, we have micro credentials and so on for staff. Is there any, any way that we can offer like specialized training over the summer, you know, to assure that, you know, everybody's up the uh, you know, is more enhanced in the ability to, you know, operate in this remote environment?
Oh, I think, I think you've stepped out over uh, Bill's skis in terms of how the training works. Melissa, you wanna, you wanna unmute and talk a little bit about that?
Sure, absolutely. Um, Chris can probably add on to this, but we also added some additional micro credentials recently that are directly related to remote learning and digital learning. So we're happy that we are having staff uh, seize that opportunity. Additionally, our staff is currently working on summer learning plans for professional development purposes as well. So we're looking forward to rolling out specific plans around um, that too.
Do we want to offer any kind of enhancement to try and, you know, get more people involved, particularly those that are not technologically? I'm, I gotta believe there's a bunch of people that realize they're not as technically sound that they were, thought they were and so on. And I know we have some stuff at the end of the school year here and so on, but I, you know, where are we going with that? Anyone?
Absolutely. So we currently had micro credentials that were for Google certified training. And we've had several staff members who have taken advantage of that over the years, but we've also have several staff members who have expressed more interest in that. So those are currently micro credentials. Um, and then also, we happen to have that conversation today about how we can make the professional learning experiences um, enticing for people over the summer and continuing to offer professional development hours that go towards recertification opportunities.
Okay, okay, good. And then, uh, let's see, one-on-one, how far are we, how far are we away from that? How many, how many dollars or units or whatever? I, I, you know, we're, we're, what's the comment here on it? It's uh, I think it was, we're approaching one-to-one, uh, particularly at the secondary level or something. How, how far away are we? I mean, how many units do we have to buy to get that done?
So uh, uh, Rod can, can likely unmute Jim, but uh, what, I really think what we're looking at if we move to one-to-one is probably buying new units for the high school and then cascading whatever units are at the high school down um, into the, to the system. So um, we're still working through some of the initial elements, but the, the price tag for that's going to be north of a million dollars.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, I, I, you know, I just think that, you know, if we're going to be in this kind of mode now and moving forward, we've got to give serious consideration to that again. I, you know, again, as we look at this, so, this budget or anticipated revision of this budget, you know, I, I, I really would like to see some consideration in that regard.
We, we are, we're, it's more than consideration. We are planning it. It's just going to be a question of, of how we approach that, that funding. I think Bill mentioned there, um, that, that's probably, there's a, a place where that CARES funding can come in to uh, support, I think, a lot of those technology costs. And then, uh, you know, I think one of the other things we'll have to just figure out is um, what we, we bite off right away versus, you know, do, do we lease any of that technology like we have to spread out the impact over a couple of years?
Okay, Ty, those are the questions I had. Thanks.
I have a question uh, for Bill. Um, you know, I know that there's going to be a need for COVID supplies, whether we go back in August or it's October or it's, it's, it's later than that. And there are delays in getting so many of those supplies as it is right now. Um, how proactive should we be? Like, should we be, yeah, I'm, I'm thinking of things like cleaning supplies, masks, things like that, that are, that have a significant lead time as it is right now. Should we be jumping on that a little bit earlier? Um, because we know no matter when we go back, there are things we're going to need in those respects that maybe we haven't had before.
Yeah, and again, I, when we uh, you know, as Dr. Schuler had mentioned and kind of what the next slide is, um, for our, uh, our committee that uh, is looking at all that, the, you know, under the other potential issues, which is the next slide down. You know, we've got a number of those items. A lot of the cleaning products are supplied by ABM and we've already had conversations with them. They're our, uh, our outsourced company that does the majority of our buildings. So um, we, you know, we've kind of outlined some of the items, cleaning, disinfecting, uh, safety supplies, just communication and, and signage that we're going to need. Uh, you know, if we need to get the sneeze guards or the plexiglass dividers, uh, those type of things. So those are all the type of things that we're talking about that committee. We do have access to uh, different companies that we've been working with. Dr. Schuler was able to uh, get a large order of masks uh, that was delivered within a week. So um, we are, we're working with different companies to get those products and, and starting to stock up. And that's really with the work of that committee to talk about those operational supplies that we're going to need that are kind of outlined in that next, next slide. And um, and I, yeah, we are trying to get a jump on those items, Chris. Um, the other items, uh, as you look below also, uh, that are going to really be a function that we're working through on our operations uh, committee is, you know, transportation, uh, just trying to figure out the, how social distancing would occur on on our school buses and what the, what that operation is going to look like. Uh, so that's obviously something that'll be tied into how we uh, how the school year starts and what that'll look like. Um, we're also talking about, and I mentioned uh, before, how that meal service looks like if we're going to have students eating in their classrooms or uh, how we spread that out and what those meals look like. Can it be the same type of meal that they were receiving, you know, before March thirteenth? A lot of the meals we're serving now, um, uh, don't look a lot different, or don't look the same as what we normally serve with hot meals and and that type of thing. So uh, again, an item that we're looking at uh, with that operations committee and try, as we move forward with our overall plan for the startup of school in the fall. And, and then finally, just, uh, and again, this probably ties in a little bit to Charlie's area, uh, but just staffing considerations. What's that gonna, uh, how will that look based on the actual learning model, uh, when school, uh, when students return to school or continue in some version of a remote learning setting? So uh, again, all items that are, um, also, you know, we need to keep, uh, keep an eye on as we move forward here. Any questions on those items? I know Chris, you know, gave me a good segue into it.
I have a question on transportation. Um, because this is, you know, we'll need to determine whether and how this is possible. I assume if there's some kind of hybrid situation, we have to provide transportation, correct, in some form? So in order, is it correct to say in order for there to be a hybrid situation, there, they have to figure out the transportation piece of it because we're required to provide transportation, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
If, one thing I'll mention tied to that is that a, a hybrid situation inherently reduces your load on a bus. So it is possible that we might be running normal transportation service, but just have less students because of the schedule that are uh, that are potentially accessing that. But that, that whole, I mean, just across the the, the industry, trying to figure out what physical distancing is going to look like on a school bus is, is a gigantic puzzle.
Any other uh, questions on that? Again, I'll, I'll just end by saying there's a lot of uncertainty about next year and we're uh, continuing to monitor where we feel we're going to end up this year. Uh, obviously, there's some expenditures that are in and out, uh, we're not going to hit the, hit the budget, which uh, because of uh, what occurred, but there are also some revenue streams that are uh, tightening up a little bit as well. So uh, we'll continue to keep the board uh, updated as, as we have progresses.
Sorry, I lost my internet there for a moment. Any other questions from board members? Uh, Bill, I, I, I do have, I guess, just a one big picture question, you know, so if we look forward to next year and and add up all the pluses and minuses, should we be uh, kind of getting our uh, minds ready for having to dig into some of our fund balance to um, make up the difference and fund some of these additional costs we anticipate?
Uh, we started to run some scenarios. And if you remember back in January, we had a positive operating balance for, anticipated for uh, next year, obviously with interest earnings, the uh, health insurance and um, and some other reductions. I think that number is probably uh, in the red right now. It's probably not a big number, but it's something uh, that we'll have to address uh, through the budgeting process. Obviously, if, if things go really off the rails with the state, uh, it may, you know, it's a, obviously could become a large, much larger number. And we'll have to continue to monitor that uh, uh, as we move forward.
Okay.
Hey, Brad, can I just, can I, can I just want, one thing I just want to mention? So uh, a-again, like that budget picture, when you look to next year, I think there are going to be some challenges there, but um, I, as a board, one, kudos and be thankful that you've put yourself in the financial position that you're in, right? Me, meaning, um, if you've got tough decisions, the way that you've gone about building up funding for capital projects and the way you've built up your fund balance a little bit over, you know, that, that floor, it gives you some flexibility in how you approach the conversations, because ultimately, I think you mess, you make the best budget decisions when you have time to really consider all potential reductions in the out years and you're not in a spot where in the course of a month, you suddenly have to pivot and cut, you know, five million dollars. So you have a little flexibility uh, that, that moves into this and that, that really is kudos to everybody on the board and your predecessors that kind of put you on this path to where we are. You didn't do that with this in mind, but you, you have, uh, you have a little flexibility.
Yeah, thank you for that. Okay, um, I guess that's it for that oral report. So now we'll move to the second one, which is uh, talking about providing closure to the school year for students, staff and our school community. Again, turn it over to Dr. Schuler or staff.
Yep, I'm gonna go right to Dr. Salagi, who's gonna take you through this one.
All right, thank you, Dr. Schuler. I am, uh, I'm gonna go ahead and share my screen here momentarily too. Uh, can you all see providing closure board report five thirteen twenty?
Yes.
So we've talked, um, talked a lot tonight actually about, you know, what things may look like in August and our work that's ahead of us. Um, uh, you know, in the summer and future implications. Um, and you know, we've also ramped up in March, all relearning opportunities. And at the same time now, we recognize the importance of providing closure. Uh, most importantly, closure from, from really an emotional standpoint uh, for our staff and our students. And ultimately, hopefully through our, when we do this with our staff and students, we provide closure to this school year for our community. So I hope to um, just give a little context and, and some information on, on what that work has looked like, what our goals are and and where we're at with that work. We developed a team of sixteen members. Those were members from our senior leadership team, um, principals, assistant principals, um, our social work lead, psychologist lead and our, and our nurse lead. Um, really focused around how do we provide closure to this school year? You know, it came to just such a um, an abrupt piece in March and we transitioned really quickly. And um, we really wanted to be thoughtful about our, our approach and how we approach this. Ultimately, from those sixteen team members, um, we identified some goals, which I'll share with you in the next slide, but those uh, team members broke into smaller teams really focused around how do we achieve each one of those goals at all levels um, of our district. And ultimately, those teams developed guidance, they developed resources to support our goals around providing closure for our students and staff. Um, and then those teams reported back to our larger team, our closure team that you'll see there. And ultimately, um, we then reported back to our, our COVID nineteen daily team that meets, that Dr. Schuler uh, mentioned earlier um, during our time. And then obviously, we have representation and then gets down to our school level through this work because we meet weekly with our principals as well. So our, our communication structure again um, is hitting all kind of different pieces. I'm going to go on to the next slide and talk about what were our actual goals. We had five areas for providing appropriate closure. And I'm going to talk through what each one of these are, but first of all, the goals. Um, goal number one was demonstrating empathy in all of our communication actions with, with all of our school community. Uh, we utilize stages of grief as the foundation for this pro, uh, for this approach. Um, we want to ensure that all of our classroom teachers provide closure for our students. Uh, we want to ensure that we consider all of our ceremonial events um, and that we implement them when appropriate and possible, even if they look a little differently. Um, and then from a physical standpoint, ensuring really successful facility clo- closure and material returns um, to our families in, in an appropriate and safe manner. And then um, providing academic closure uh, to the school year. So those were our five goal areas. I'm going to talk through each one of those and certainly at the end of each one, feel free to, if, if there's questions, uh, we'll certainly take them. So goal number one is actually something that's ongoing, but is a part of providing closure as well. Um, and it's really just appropriate, given the circumstances. And that's really around being empathetic in our communication with our school community. And a part of that is really understanding the stages of grief that um, all community members, students, staff, um, and families are going through as a result of things that we may have lost as a part of COVID nineteen, right? So our work really started with creating professional learning around understanding the stages of grief, right? Where you're at denial or anger or acceptance or whatever it may be, right? And understanding that a response or how we communicate has to be formed with real empathy at the beginning and ending of messaging. Um, and just really having an understanding approach in this piece. Um, we then, we developed a, a pretty thorough po- pod- We then, we developed a pretty thorough podcast. It's part of our professional learning program that that we've developed through this time. Melissa Murphy's done excellent work with that as well, but we did a specific podcast on stages of grief. We trained all of our principals and our entire leadership team on the stages of grief, not only to the podcast, provided a specific training for them. And then we really talked about community communication and and about what that should look like, gave some really quality examples around this. So this is really the foundation for our work as we're going through this. It's not only about communication, but it's just really about having an understanding approach and stages of grief even lends itself to how we provide closure and how we understand how important closure is at this time. The team members from that sixteen teen team that really focused in on this were Tracy Burnham, our emotional wellness coordinator and social work department chair, John DeStanza, psychology department chair and myself. Goal two was to ensure it is to ensure that our classroom teachers provide closure for our students. So we've developed guidance and resources for our staff to provide closure for our students. We know that you know, the the majority of our staff are going to naturally do this. They've been, we've had a focus on connecting with our with our kids throughout this time, pre and post, pre COVID and during COVID. The focus on connecting has been really, really important. But at the same time, this is an uncertain time for our kids and we recognize that. So we really wanted to make sure, we really wanted to make sure that we had clear expectations around what does it mean to provide closure for students? And really what that means is that we're giving our kids an opportunity to say goodbye to trusted adults that they have, that they get an opportunity to connect and say goodbye to their friends. And at the youngest grades, having making sure that our our students know that they're moving on to the next grade level. So we have a team of representatives from the elementary all the way through the high school level who that developed guidance, expectations, communication pieces and some resources as well as to what that will look like. And each week, we bring this back in front of our principals to say, where are you at with this? How are you communicating? Some have building based teams. And certainly, as we move into the end of e-learning, e-learning goes all the way till May twenty ninth, but we know that last week, in addition to the academic learnings taking place, we also want to be weaving in the social emotional work, just like we would if we were face to face with our kids. Our goal was ensuring important ceremonial events are considered implemented. This is right in line, actually, kind of you take goal two and you take it almost to a school based level. And so certainly, we're thinking about all of our ceremonial events. The the team here, though, had a specific focus on our transition points and student recognition, making sure that our fifth graders who have been at their elementary schools for many years are recognized, making sure that our eighth grade recognition goes on. And then obviously, there's been intense work done with the graduation piece. What I will tell you is that this team did not, was not a part of the graduation work. We knew that that was such a large task. You all know that Dr. Schuler, Dr. Kyle, Erica Laiacano, and I'm probably forgetting others that are that are on the call right now, our high school principals, Dr. Kyle, we're all a part of that work, but we know there's a lot of other pieces that go into this as well. So truthfully, what we've done is developed guidance, communication structures around what we should do to recognize our students, some safety guidelines as well and all those different pieces. So you can see a team there again, representative of senior leadership team members, as well as many of our principals and assistant principals that were a part of this work. This is ongoing, right? We still have schools that are working on this, but what I can tell you is that our schools have worked diligently to 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 work to recognize our students, especially at their transition points. They've done some school based stuff. There's also been some partnering with PTAs as well. We've tried to give our schools guardrails so that the celebrations and recognitions can be somewhat unique to their school, but at the same time, making sure that we have a high level experience for for all kids. Our fourth goal is ensuring successful facility closure material return process. So there is some closure. Well, this isn't an emotional kind of approach, not an emotional approach. There is some emotional closure when you get your materials back and some of those pieces. And in the same process, we know that there's kids that have materials and families that have materials at the building and there's a time to get that back to them. So this is really where we work to develop a detailed process to allow for the return of materials to families. We had a little bit of head start on this. A lot of credit goes to to Dr. Mitchell at Lincoln Elementary School because of some earlier construction, he had an opportunity to to work through this process as well. But from a district perspective, we had to look at this at different levels because it does look differently at different levels. And so really develop the process that's going to allow for material return to our families and really adhering to safety and health guidelines and also giving our facility staff timely opportunity to get into building. So obviously, Mr. Farley, Mr. Robinson, Dr. Kyle were were important pieces to this team because of of the logistical pieces as well and Dr. Kyle's expertise at the secondary level. So so those were the four goals, fifth goal being academic closure. I'm gonna stop here. I'm going to turn it over to Mrs. Murphy because she's led a group around that outside of the sixteen leaders that I was working with. She's had a larger leadership group working specifically on that goal.
Thank you, Dr. Slaggy. You can see here with goal number five, providing academic closure to the school year. And so I had a very large team that I had the opportunity to work with and work on the items outlined here on the slide where first and foremost, really firming up what those professional development days will look like on June first, second and third. I do want to note to the board, there has been ongoing professional learning for our staff throughout the e-learning time period, but this would be an opportunity for us to reflect on that time period, look at survey results and prepare for the fall. We also had to just think through workflow processes that really just need to look a little bit different because we're not physically in buildings at the end of the school year that sit around just regular practices with report cards. We have an elementary progress report that will be used during the e-learning time and just our special education and EL paperwork. And then finally, that team also thought about creative activities for the last week of instruction. And so how we can take what we might normally do when we're physically in the brick and mortar rooms and transform that into a digital space. So at this point in time, Dr. Slaggy and I will take questions regarding the five goal areas.
Okay, any board members want to chime in and ask a question or make comments?
Yeah, it's Rob. One, great work. It's fantastic. One of the observations I have is I see on the kind of the team names. I've seen one person show up on four teams, right? Good, great. I'm glad people are kicking in, right? And fully committed to it, but any opportunity for expanding participation, I think, could be great, you know, to other other members in the in the district. You know, I don't know if it was just availability or desire or how that worked, but it would be great to see it a little broader if we can. Not that we'll do this in the future, but as we do, you know, invest time on these topics, I think it's important that those that are on the fringe get pulled in a little bit more. Secondly, I think if I go back to, I think it's goals two and three, and while this is a school closure conversation, what became, what just kind of popped into my head is as we move into next year, the the folks transitioning into new schools. New schools potentially, there's more anxiety with that, right? Those transitioning from eighth to high school, those transitioning from fifth to junior. And, you know, some maybe extra attention on those folks in their transition as we learned from talking to students, those transition programs where the upperclassmen welcome and freshmen were so important. I think it'll be even more important going forward. I was just, I was just thinking about that, about, you know, as we move into the fall, you know, the same, the same concepts will apply, I guess. But great stuff, and I really appreciate the time.
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Hamlin, and certainly agree with you about the transition point as we move forward. And so certainly, we're hearing that and and are going to work towards that. It's going to be a big part of our work. So thank you.
I have a quick question of just about end of the year celebrations and such. Can we get as board members, the lists of staff members who we would have been celebrating in person either for the different service year marks or in retiring? Because I don't know that I have a list of those people.
Yes, we can get that to you and we are preparing a video too that will be will communicate out. It'll be live streamed on the twentieth, when we were planning on doing that honors recognition at Hubble Middle School for fifteen twenty five and retirees. We're putting together a video that'll be live streamed at four o'clock on the twentieth, when we would normally have hosted that event. So we'll be sharing that information out so we can absolutely provide those names to you as well.
Any other questions from board members? All right. Thank you. We will move on to number three, which is update on student learning for summer twenty twenty and the fall of twenty twenty.
Yep, go ahead, Melissa, take it away.
Okay, I'm going to share the screen here. So throughout the spring, we have been looking as an administrative team about how we can continue to provide those traditional summer act academic activities that we have provided, but then also thinking about our remote learning situation and what are the other learning experiences we can provide? And so the board received this document that outlined those opportunities that we are planning. And so you'll see here, it starts with our high school summer online some summer school. This would be what we traditionally had is ELO. And now we're going to be transferring that over to our online platform here with our district two hundred teachers. Our registration numbers are in and we have the highest number of students that have been enrolled to date. So we are pleased about that. Freshman Bridge, this pertains to really the just the last report that we just had and really having to think creatively about how we can offer that freshman bridge program that we have offered in the past in a remote learning situation. So teams at both high schools are starting to think about what that can look like and have planning underway there. Our AP inspiring excellence bridge program, we're committed to continuing to run that in an e-learning format. And so we're currently in the process of registering students for that coursework as well. Extended school year is another program that will be in the e-learning format. And so we are again working on registering our students. And that program will continue to have students working on their individual e-learning plan that was developed during the e-learning process and will continue to work on those students' goals during ESY. Now, administration has really worked to be creative about some other new summer learning opportunities that we could offer. And so here you're going to see two that are some new opportunities we've put together. So one being, what can we do as a summer bridge experience for elementary? And then even most recently, we've really expanded that idea to middle school students, too, where really thinking about different learning opportunities and customizing that for the different kinds of learners that we have in this summer. So students that may benefit by just receiving materials. We are looking at materials that can be shipped directly to students' homes. And then students who could benefit from tutoring over the summer in an e-learning format, we're we're putting that in place. You should note here that it does talk about concentrating on literacy skills for kindergarten, first and second grade, and then concentrating on math for our intermediate and middle school students. And that was very specific because when we look at research and research is really around what it looks like for summer slide, it really talks a lot about how those learning gaps exist more for intermediate students in the area of math. And so that was the reason why we purposely put this planning place together. We're also Erica Loyacano, myself and a team of administrators is trying to get creative around the idea of family enrichment and experiences. We know summer is not going to look the same for our students, those clubs, those sports, park district camps. It's uncertain whether those are going to happen or not this summer. And so we are working with community partners to put together opportunities for our students this summer and also thinking just about creative family engagement opportunities that we can put together in a choice board format. So when families are at home, they may have some other ideas there. We're also thinking about what that planning looks like moving forward into next school year. And so you'll see that we're really thinking about curriculum compacting. We're thinking about how do we identify students that may need additional interventions and supports? What do those assessments look like? And we've already started to outline some support programs for students. We're talking about additional resources periods at our high school credit recovery course options. Our middle school is committed to building online math modules this summer. And so that we're excited that we could roll that out in a tutoring situation this summer, but could work very well for either e-learning, remote learning or, you know, hybrid blended situation next fall. And then as well, looking at possible extended day opportunities for students that are identified special education or have an intense interventions when we might be able to offer that again. But I will note, we're continued to be committed to providing high quality programming and thinking in creative ways about really how we can meet our students' needs throughout COVID nineteen. So I'll just take any questions that you may have.
Melissa, one, one quick question right off the bat. Talk a little bit about funding for some of these opportunities. So where 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 are some of the funding sources coming from for the added summer opportunity?
Absolutely. So we we had some built in stipends that we already have as part of our district budget that we would be utilizing and additionally, some materials costs that didn't happen this past year, we would be reallocating to some of these opportunities.
I have one other question. The do we interact with other schools, you know, and catch ideas from them, you know, and okay, go ahead.
Yeah, absolutely. In fact, I participate in the DuPage Curriculum Group, and this was a topic of conversation amongst other people that are in my similar position most recently. And so we were all sharing ideas among how we're going to be meeting the needs of students in the summer. And I know other administrators on our senior leadership team are in other circles that have these same conversations.
I think there was a comment earlier by, it was in the public section about, you know, other schools are doing this, doing that. I guess, you know, what is your feel that where do we stand on this? Are we, are we, you know, competitive in that environment? Are we, you know, way behind, way ahead? What's your reaction to that?
In looking at our benchmark districts, I feel that we are right in line, if not ahead of providing high quality experiences for our students during this time period.
I have one question, Melissa, and you know, summer is typically a very large driver's education opportunity for our students. You know, what are our plans for recouping that possibly come fall? Is there any plans for, are there?
Yes, Ian Smith, our director for high school, has been in ongoing conversations with the high school around that. And we're still continuing to look at when we would be able to offer those opportunities.
Hey, Chris, I get a little bit more specifically, though, they are looking to try to make all those hours up this summer. So I mean, we're looking at a variety of options that would allow us to make sure that all kids that missed hours here in the spring, along with kids that had already signed up for the summer, we're trying to create a path to 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 get to all of those hours. But I think as Melissa said, part of that's just going to depend on at what point can we start putting kids behind the wheel again. But but Ian, Ian's got that mapped out. He and the high schools they have a very specific hour count of what we need to get made up. And and, you know, we've even started to have some conversation about if we can't do that all, if we just don't physically have enough equipment. If we can't do that all, if we just don't physically have enough equipment ourselves. Could we partner perhaps with some community partners to kind of get that piece done?
Okay, any other questions from board members or comments? All right, thank you. So that concludes our oral reports. I just want to say thank you to the entire leadership team and probably so many people across our district. I'm sure you start work each day and something new. Gets realized and new challenges and as you work through things. And I want to thank you for just kind of embracing the challenge and keep working together. And I know it's been tough and there's no end in sight right now, that's for sure. So once again, thanks. Okay, that concludes our oral reports. We do have a couple written reports that are posted for information only. We have the monthly financial report and the Freedom of Information Act report. The ELC construction update, which I believe is moving well along. Maybe, maybe Jeff or somebody can comment a little bit about that, kind of status that. And then the fourth is the board communication log. So Jeff, a quick, maybe thirty second update on Jefferson?
Yeah, we, so we, we've, we've, actually, we're going to pick up a little bit of time. Been able to, to get some of the existing building cleaned out a little bit early. And, and so I, I think in the end, Brad, we're probably going to have picked up a couple of weeks here of summer work. That would have gone to, to cite the board. I remember that the new building is really done. We're in great shape in terms of the new building. In fact, I think furniture is getting delivered here pretty soon. And that, that will be done, but we knew we were going to be on a tight timeline in terms of getting all the abatement. And then existing building torn down and then get all that site work done. And so we've been able to move that up. But worked with Stephanie and Erica is going to be a part of this. Actually, the very last day of school, the 29th is the day that we've targeted for tear down of the building. So that they can kind of build that into their, their closure plan. So Stephanie is working on that with her, her staff. And again, that's a couple of weeks ahead of where we thought we'd be.
Great, great, thank you. Any other questions from board members on the written reports? All right, we will.
Before you leave that, Brad, I got one comment. The, I noticed the, you know, on the board communication log. I, I was really pleased to see the letter that we had got from Joe Kish and his visit with the one student that we had. You know, that went to some alternative schooling and so on. You know, you know, that such a difficult decision for us to deal with those matters. And to get that kind of feedback is just wonderful. I, you know, I was really, really happy to see that. And I, I look forward to those kind of reports in the future, really, you know, to make sure we're all, you know, that, that's working like it's supposed to.
Yeah, great. That's a good comment, Jim. Okay, next we move to reports from board members. We, other reports from board members, I know we have two things that I would like to kind of quickly walk through. And both of them relate to the Illinois Association of School Boards. And first, one of the things we've done for probably about eight years is. Submit our school district for a board governance award. And that's every couple of years. And I know that this year or this summer, our seminal time is up. So I'm going to turn it over to Chris Crabtree and maybe talk a little bit about the deadline and kind of the process. And some other help you might engage people in.
Sure. So I've had the opportunity to work on the last two. I believe this is our fifth one that we're trying for this summer. So I've, I've worked on the last two with Jim Roman and I'm willing to take on the challenge of it this time as well. Both Jenna and Susan have volunteered. And so, you know, working through the challenges of three of us with open meetings. I think we can easily divide and conquer this and work kind of, you know, each on our own a little bit. And then I can work with Diana, who's an instrumental part of all of this. In pulling it all together this summer. So. So I, I, you know, I'm, I'm look come June, once things have settled down a little bit with the end of the, end of the school year. And we can spend some time in June working on that, but look forward to the opportunity to be able to try for our fifth governance award.
Great, thank you for everybody volunteering to help on that. And then the second item related to IASB is. I received, and maybe everybody received a letter on April 1st regarding the resolution process. That letter basically provides an invitation to member districts to submit for consideration a resolution. For the IASB Resolutions Committee, that's something that happens every year at the annual conference. We'll, we'll see if the, how the annual conference might take place this coming November. But Susan has developed a draft resolution that she would like to present to the board for. Just kind of present it tonight and then for future consideration. What I would do is ask the board to review. The, the draft that I believe is, yeah, it's already posted on the electronic school board for public review, I believe. We will kind of review this at our June 10th meeting. And then we would have to decide if we would like to submit a resolution. That would have to be submitted to IASB by June 24th. So tonight is just a little bit of an introduction of the idea. And then a, a deeper conversation on our agenda at the June 10th meeting. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Susan to introduce her, her thoughts.
There we go. Sorry about that. So thank you. I just want to very quickly give a brief overview. And what inspired me to, to write the resolution. So I read a news article from NBC News in February that discussed how school districts around the country. Are beginning to pass resolution, their own board resolutions to develop and distribute gun safety information in schools. The first one to do it was the Los Angeles School District in June of 2019. Then Denver did in January of this year in Phoenix in February. And several other school districts, whether they do it through resolution or not, are developing gun safety awareness campaigns. To include in their safety protocols. So this isn't a completely new concept. Districts across the country are starting to do this. And so, you know, up to this point in time, we have done a really great job at preparing for a response. To an active shooter situation and that was very much needed. But something that I have been thinking about for a long time, and even before I was on the board was, you know, what can we do? Before we get to that point, what can we do to prevent firearms from getting into hands of kids? And, and potential perpetrators? And this is what we do. We educate and we can educate students and staff on gun safety information. And this also ties directly into our social emotional learning programs and our school safety protocols. Because obviously we, we have invested a lot of time and resources into our, the mental health of our students. And school connectedness and, and this ties right into that. It is unfortunately suicide within children and teens has drastically increased over the past decade. And suicide by firearm is the most deadly. And so this fits into our safety services and information that we already provide in schools. Such as, you know, fire, fire safety and tornado drills and bus safety. And drugs, drug use and drug consequences and Aaron's Law. That, you know, that where we teach kids about personal body safety and good touch, bad touch. And in gun safety is just an area that hasn't been addressed up to this point. And Illinois was actually first, it was the first state to pass Aaron's Law in 2013. So we have a history and a precedent of Illinois supporting safety information to children. And then you might say, well, why now? We are obviously in the middle of a huge pandemic and we have a lot of other fish to fry right now. And first of all, there's the deadline, the June deadline of submitting these. But I felt that this actually was the perfect time to talk about something like this. Because all of our students across the state are confined to their homes almost 24 hours a day at this point. And we don't know what the future is going to be, that this will probably last for quite a while. And there may be periods where we're in and out of quarantine as this virus makes its way through. And in March of 2020, Illinois, in the state of Illinois specifically. We actually saw the most gun purchase inquiries over 60,000 than our state has ever seen. Since we began keeping records in 1992. And in the resolution, I, I listed a number of statistics that, you know, I'm not going to repeat here. The, the one that I will is that, that relates to that is that almost 75% of children under the age of 10. Who live in homes with guns are reported to knowing, reported to knowing where the location is of that firearm in the house. And 36% have handled those guns. So our education environment has moved from our buildings to the home. And this is an area of, of safety information that I feel is really important to provide. To, to our students and parents, you know, at this time. And then lastly, you might wonder, well, why didn't we just talk about this as our own board in our own district? And maybe doing a resolution for our own board or creating an awareness campaign. But I, I will just be frank, I just felt, why not swing for the fence? And, you know, let's, this affects all school districts across our state. And on all of our families and our children's, you know, mental health and wellbeing. And I just thought, let's have the discussion and, and try to, to make it work for everybody. So I appreciate you taking the time to read it and consider it and I will turn it back to Brad.
All right, thank you, Susan. You know, just as a reminder to the board, so take a look at this, be prepared for a discussion on June 10th. At which point we, we, we would need to make a decision. And just to put some broader context around it, if we should decide as a board that we wanted to submit this resolution. The steps that would be followed would be, it would be presented to the IASB Resolutions Committee, which is made up of. I believe it's representatives from each county across the state. That committee that would then decide if they want to bring it to the resolution, to the delegate assembly at the statewide conference in November. And then that would be voted upon by member districts from across the state. And then if it was passed, then the Illinois Association of School Boards would lobby on behalf of their member districts to. Work on legislation. So there's several steps that would have to go be gone through. Before this would become reality, that's the same situation for every resolution that a, a member districts presents. So that's, that's kind of the process. So thank you, Susan, for kind of raising the issue and, and presenting it to us. And I appreciate the research you've done and put in a lot of great detail into this. So again, board members, just individually, take a look at this and be prepared for the discussion on June 10th. I guess if anybody has any specific questions right now, this is not really a discussion item. But if you want to just kind of raise the question so that we can prepare, be prepared for that discussion. And then I guess I'll kind of open it up just to kind of put the question out there so we can think about that before June 10th.
So Brad, if we had feedback, just send it to Susan, do, I mean, how would we collaborate on that? Because we're not going to have any time between the next meeting and. It has to be.
Why not? Yeah, that's a good question, Rob. Thank you. Why don't, if you have individual questions, why don't you send that to me only? And then I will separately share that back out with the board, to the board. For, just to get everybody aware of what the questions are being. And then we will discuss it, discuss it on June 10th. We won't have any conversations across email. But if you wanted to just put some questions to me by email, I will, I will distribute it like so other pieces of information that I push out.
And thank you, Susan. I thought, great job. Really appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right, that's, so that ends that topic.
Wait, wait, Brad, I got a couple, I have a couple items. Number one, I, I was the board representative for the Student Excellence Foundation meeting this last month. And a couple of things there, the number one, that, you know, that organization is extremely run professionally. You know, I'm really, I was really impressed by that. I, you know, the meeting went on for, you know, quite a few hours. But, you know, on top of it though, they did it very, you know, very well. It was very nicely done. But the two kind of big topics were, you know, the food insecurity funding crisis fund. You know, was, you know, a successful program, you know, and it, it, you know, raised a good amount of money. And, you know, I, I think it's still ongoing and, you know, but it, it really exceeded the expectations. And then the last item was the, I think they're in the process of finalizing the review of the grant request. For, you know, teachers submit the grant request and, you know, I think they had delayed the actual decision date. But I think it'll be coming up and done before the end of, end of the year, so the end of the school year. So, you know, again, that was my role attending. And then the other thing I got asked today to be involved with a, a city task force to deal with. You know, the linkage between the school, the, the business community, government and so on. To deal with how it's affecting our communities and, you know, steps we can take to deal with, you know, contacting legislators. Or, you know, you know, try to get, get things done here to, you know, that are effective for our community. Versus, you know, the bigger issues of, of the statewide that, you know, we have really limited control over. So I'll, I'll report on that as it affects the schools as time goes on here. So those are the two comments I had.
Great, thank you, Jim. And thanks for doing that. And I guess one comment that I'll make is, I think I mentioned at previous meetings, but just so everybody is aware. Every week for, since this started, I've been dialoguing with, with six other school board presidents. Just kind of bouncing ideas off each other. What's everybody dealing with? What are they hearing? So it's a good conversation to learn, learn from our peers and some of our benchmark districts. So just for reference, that that would be Naperville School District 203. Indian Prairie School District 204, Elmhurst 205, St. Charles District 303. Elgin School District U46 and then Barrington School District 220. So I think it's been a productive process to have that dialogue. I know all the administrators and Mrs. Murphy mentioned, she's in a group and there's lots of those groups going on. So it's good to be connected and have, share, share thoughts and, and hear, hear what people are thinking about. So any other comments from board members?
Hey, this is Dave. I have a couple of comments.
Okay.
Just, you know, as a parent of two high schoolers. The, the e-learning has been, you know, I would say pretty good. You know, as I talk to my kids, I think they're not learning as much as they would in class. But they're still learning and they're progressing and the, the two of them have a little bit different styles. And the one that's a little more disciplined is, well, probably spending just as many hours as she would be if she was in class. But I, you know, recognize that we had to turn on a dime and develop all this. I think, you know, that the administration, the teachers have all done a great job. And know if it continues in the fall, that it's going to look different. So I know, I know there are some people and some parents that aren't happy with the level of. Of engagement or the amount of work, but you know, it, this is unprecedented. And I, you know, to expect it to be what it's going to look like when it's fully mature is, you know. I, I just think they've done a really good job. And then I wanted, I have a senior, so I just wanted to touch on graduation. Because that has been something I know has been very frustrating for the administration. Because the rules change sometimes by the hour. And, you know, it's, it's frustrating for everybody. The, but I, I, I don't know how we could fault Dr. Schuler, the administration, the schools, the principals, us. For what we're dealing with, you know, and I, I feel like the communication and the outreach. And, you know, they, they know they met with school officers, they had. Surveys that everybody had a chance to participate and they weren't limited to very specific questions. They were free form. So while I know there's been some criticism about how that's been handled, I think the school district has done an exceptional job on that. And I just wanted to kind of get that in the record. And that's all I have.
All right, thank you. Anybody else? All right, turning to the next topic on the agenda would be topics for future discussion. So in future board meetings, we're going to talk about the fiscal year. So, in future board meetings, we're going to talk about the fiscal year 21 tentative budget. We're going to also talk about student handbooks, as well as continued discussion on the 2020-21 school year. Our next regular meeting will be held, as I mentioned previously, on June 10th, 2020, at 7:00 PM, hopefully at the School Service Center, if we're lucky. Otherwise, we'll be brought to you by Zoom again. We do have one, we do have closed session tonight, so I'm going to move to adjourn a closed session for the purpose of discussing the appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of the specific employees, specific individuals who serve as an independent contractor in a park, recreational, or educational setting, or specific volunteers of the public body, or legal counsel for the public body, including hearing testimony on a complaint lodged against an employee, a specific individual who serves as an independent contractor in a park, recreational, or educational setting, or a volunteer of the public body, or against legal counsel for the public body to determine its validity, under 5 ILCS 120/2, Subparagraph C, Subparagraph 1. Can I have a second to adjourn a closed session?
Second, Jim Matheson.
Second, Jim Matheson. Okay, there's no action that will be taking place following closed session, so I'll do a roll call vote first, since I moved, I vote yes. Jim?
Yes.
Okay, Chris?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, Rob Hanlon?
Yes.
And Dave Long?
Yes.
All right, so the motion is adjourned, our regular open meeting, or the motion was approved, our regular open meeting is adjourned, and the board will now move to closed session. Thanks, everybody.